The other thing is they've got the solar-powered flare on most active wells.
Oh, at the, uh, at the search plant?
Uh, at the landfill, okay.
That's great.
Everyone calls me the one.
Folks, ready? All right, I will call tonight's, uh, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting to order. I'll accept a motion to accept the, uh, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Dr. Pratherich and Vice Chair Rosenberg with the, uh, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Uh, likewise, except any additions, corrections, changes to the minutes or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Pratherich with the motion, Ms. Blackmore with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, that, uh, passes. Uh, at this time, we'll entertain comments from the public on items not, uh, on tonight's agenda, so if there's something that either of you would like to come up and talk about that is not on the agenda, please come on up, introduce yourself.
Just stay right here, do you want to come up closer?
Um, if you go to the podium, the mic will pick you up on the recording. So just, uh, introduce yourself, uh, and, and share your, uh, address and...
Okay. Uh, my name is Karen Burt Gibson, and I received a call this week, um, from Sam Perry, and he was, you know, considering some, uh, different ones for the board to maybe be a part of the board, and so I thought it'd be nice to stay, come and check things out, so that's why I'm here tonight. I'm a local resident of Oxford all my life.
Awesome. Well, thanks for introducing yourself.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, any other comments? Perfect, seeing none. We will go on to reports from, uh, commissions, boards, committees, and staff. Mr. Smith? You know I love asking that.
I know.
You may have something you want to share.
No, I don't think I have anything to say. I didn't bring, I didn't prepare anything for tonight, so.
Perfect. We're still gonna find a reciprocity board for him to go to. Vice Chair Rosenberg.
Yeah, so, um, as far as housing stuff goes, um, we were super happy as the Housing Advisory Commission to see that, um, it was approved to, uh, use ARPA funds and then also to modernize the code, the zoning code, so that'll be amazing. And, um, also, property has been purchased on Chestnut Avenue, which is really cool, um, on West Chestnut, um, near Charleston Avenue. Um, so the hope is that affordable housing, um, may go in there. And I believe that is all, um, we're doing the cottage community, so, yep, that was the other thing.
All right.
Yep.
My turn?
Yeah?
Um, so a lot going on with the Fire Mountain Commission, both in things we're working on and recent results, some of which I stated just before we started. Um, so, uh, education campaign currently going on for native lawns and pollinators, which is fantastic by the city. Um, we're looking towards electrification goals going forward, and the biggest thing that I'm excited about is we have that solar flare, solar-powered flare, so we don't confuse people with the, the sun's, uh, actions there. Uh, the solar-powered flare burns off methane from our old landfill, which will dramatically reduce our CO2 equivalent, um, so I'm super excited about that.
Perfect, thank you. Dr. Pratherich.
So I don't know whether we were to spend time elsewhere in the meeting to just acknowledge the resignation in service of our colleague Steve Dana, who, I've been at this civic business for too long, some of us have been kind of vituated to it, and Steve has been with us for the whole journey. Um, Steve was the city councillor for two terms and vice mayor. He planned, served on the planning, he was, I think, like me, he came into it via planning. He was, came from Cincinnati and knew the cool stuff they were doing. He brought those innovative ideas here, uh, stayed really in tune with all of the, trying to keep us moving forward, um, with planning. Um, Steve was always like, you know, we're doing an opportunity, saying like, we need to move forward. Um, so because of circumstances and life, I think he had to resign because he wanted to do the best job possible, um, and felt like he had put his service in, he definitely had put his service in, but we're gonna miss having him on, on, on the commission and his wisdom. Uh, so anyway, uh, a lot of community, community service goes kind of unrecognized. We get appointed to the boards, we come up on Tuesday nights, I think there's a thank you letter at the end, I'm not sure, yeah, there is a thank you letter at the end, but for the most part, it's, it's kind of unsung, and Steve just was reliable and, and came out, and so we will miss him, but happy that he's able to focus on things other than City of Oxford business. Um, so other things than that, just a, a little thing, I think you might talk about the Parking Transportation Advisory Board. Uh, just some updates for those of you guys who don't pay attention to council, the Marriott/Farefield Inn, we talked about potential annexation. There was a conversation at council about whether that hotel should be allowed to hook up to the, it was kind of the, the last step, was, you know, okay, well, should we be allowed this to connect to, to, I mean, it's, to water, and, and that was just the first reading, but it was kind of clear that the council, like the Planning Commission, would like to see it come into the city the, the right way, and so I think there's a process ahead for doing that. Um, the Climate Action Steering Committee, we have drafted a climate actions, uh, plan that is on the city website, I could share the link, but if you Google "climate action plan, City of Oxford," you can see it. There's an opportunity there to read what the draft is, provide any comments, um, because I think we'll be moving that forward towards finalization. Stop there.
That's great, and I just echo, Steve, um, I think always came prepared for Planning Commission and always had insightful questions, um, and picked up on, on a lot of things we might otherwise have missed, so we will, we will truly miss him on Planning Commission and his incisiveness. And, um, today we, we had our Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board meeting. We are looking and, and trying to figure out what the right approach is for a long-range transportation plan, which would be formerly known as a thoroughfare master plan. Um, and I think we're looking at how that can be as tactical as possible, um, because we did have such good input from our, from the public for our comprehensive planning process. We're now looking at how can we move the ball forward for some of our really challenged intersections and corridors where we know we might start to need some kind of early design work in order to be competitive for grants. So I think we're looking at making our funds that we're hoping come in in twenty twenty-four as strategic as possible in terms of how we do our transportation planning. Um, and then I just wanted to say, I had the opportunity today by accident to see the, um, Oats Trail connection to Talawanda High School. I, it kind of took me by surprise, I was out there to walk my dogs, and I said, "What's that?" And I was like, "Oh my gosh, there it is." And it is just such a beautiful, incredible public amenity that we will have in this community. I think it's gonna like knock it out of the park for Oxford and just make this such a cool place to live. Um, and I'm incredibly excited for that, and so grateful to all the people over time who contributed effort, uh, to make that happen, so just wanted to say how excited I am for that.
Thank you. Um, I, I also want to speak to Steve Dana's service. For the first times I got involved, uh, on the, um, Journey Commission, Steve was one of the people there, and, uh, just, I mean, I think I have not served on a board or commission more than a year without, uh, Steve, so this is gonna be, uh, interesting for me, but, uh, again, very prepared, thoughtful, um, and, and I know people on the, in council and on boards and commissions, but in addition to being prepared, uh, and, and Mary Saneley had talked about this in, uh, I think it was like the last minute or two, um, you know, uh, he would ask people questions or, or see if people would drive him somewhere, so he wasn't making, I mean, he did it on his own previously, but he, uh, he was one of the folks who encouraged me when I joined Planning to go out and look at the site, you know, make sure you go there. Um, so I'm gonna miss him. Historic and architectural preservation, we haven't met, uh, we didn't meet last month, and we're not meeting tomorrow, so, uh, that being said, we still have a lot of things going on in the background, um, something that I know, uh, Mr. Perry and, I'm trying to remember, who went from HAPC to the Five Game and Delta House?
I'm sure I'm right.
Uh, yes, Mr. Reitner. Um, so we, we are doing things, there's a lot of things that the staff are doing administratively with our, uh, commission, and much like housing, um, some of the design standards and things that we've been working on, slow and steady, are gonna, uh, ideally go through different processes, um, better processes with money, so, um, we're, we're looking forward to that, but, um, that's all I have. Mr. Perry?
The only thing I could add to what's already been said is that on behalf of the City Manager's Office, um, there's a possibility that, uh, the city could have potential for an affordable housing project on the Mary Day Parkland, um, and so there's gonna be a council work session next week, so this is kind of late breaking news, but we wanted to give the courtesy notice of the Planning Commission publicly, um, that there's a possibility City Council could endorse, um, after a work session and on a regular meeting, um, a fast-track process for rezoning, um, the Mary Day Parkland, which is about a four-and-a-half acre tract of land on the dead end of Ray's Way, um, that is kind of underutilized, um, and so that, it's zoned commercial, and so in order to meet the funding criteria, it would need to be rezoned in order to get the number of dwelling units that would make it score well. Uh, so this is just kind of a, um, a consequence of our outdated zoning code and some other challenges, but, um, because of the funding deadline, it would require several, I'll say precedents to be set, um, which council may or may not want to do, but, um, that'll be discussed, we would invite anyone from Planning Commission or the public to listen in on the discussion for the Q and A. Council will probably be voting on it one way or the other because time is of the essence. Uh, we're not sure yet how all those steps would work out, um, logistically in getting things in place, uh, prior to, I think it's August tenth, application supplemental deadline, so, um, but there's a critical need for low-to-moderate income housing really everywhere, and Oxford hasn't expressed interest in that, so just wanted to give a courtesy update publicly for next week's work session.
Perfect. Mr. Moore?
Yes, so just like to echo what all of you said about Steve. You may not be aware, but anytime we have a Planning Commission meeting scheduled, there's always the meeting before the meeting, and that's always with Steve Dana, so I will miss those meetings as well as these meetings with Steve present. Another update I wanted to share, and really I probably should have shared this at the May meeting, um, we've got a couple new interactive GIS maps available on our website. If you go to cityofoxford.org slash, or backslash GIS, uh, we have the address and property viewer as well as the zoning viewer. Um, the zoning viewer is more or less a resurrection of our interactive zoning map, and, um, so we've been hard at work behind the scenes in addition to all the planning stuff that we do, also revamping our GIS systems, modernizing them. The address viewer has been particularly helpful in kind of coordinating with utility providers and the county offices, just to communicate addresses when they're assigned, especially when it comes to pending addresses like those for our landing, so that's been a very, um, helpful tool to be able to use, um, so feel free to bookmark those new viewers on your internet browsers. Definitely essential and useful tools to have at disposal.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item, uh, six. This is a discussion item, uh, it's concept review for the Oxford Cottage Community. Mr. Moore? So, Mr. Perry, seeing as this is a discussion item, uh, do you recommend I adjourn as we would normally, or, um, just treat it as a work session?
I think you treat it like a work session.
Perfect. Thank you.
And there would be some, um, some commentary from members of the audience that would be likely requested, so however you want to handle that.
I wish technically adjourned to public. Uh, seeing as our bylaws, uh, if a work session don't allow.
True.
So.
Okay. Can we make a motion, I make a motion that we adjourn to public session?
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect. Mr. Moore?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a concept plan review for the Oxford Cottage Community. Uh, concept plans do not require any kind of formal action or vote, um, this would not be going to council from Planning Commission, this is essentially, um, informal discussion, looking over the details of the current plan that's been drafted for this particular development. It's out on Hester Road, it's fifty-two thirty-four Hester Road. Um, so this is really an opportunity for, uh, what will eventually become an applicant for a formal request, um, that being Mindy Muller, who's with us this evening. She is the president and CEO of Community Development Professionals, or CDP for short, and this is involving a two-acre site that is presently owned by the city. So in that sense, you may recall from the staff memo that the, the city as an organization wields, um, quite a bit more authority, shall we say, over defining kind of the destiny of this particular site, just seeing as how we are not only the property owner, but also the regulator in the equation. Looking at the lot dimensions, so again, it's, it's about two acres, it's actually two point one acres in size, it has a hundred and eighty-three feet of lot width and five-hundred-and-twenty-three feet of lot depth, and the current zoning classification is R1B, single-family, medium-density residential. So as it stands in terms of buy-right usage, you can really only build a single-family home on this subject parcel by right unless you do something special, like doing a plan development or subdivision. So the intent eventually is to do a plan development on the site, so it's not to further subdivide in any way, it's essentially going to be a single-site development, um, consisting of twelve affordable cottage-style units, uh, that will be smaller than the typical dwelling unit, I think the footprint was around three hundred and ninety-six square feet, so pretty small, um, compared to kind of the conventional style dwelling unit. Um, but this will be kind of clustered together in what would be referred to as a pocket community, and I'll show you a little bit more about what we mean by pocket community here in a bit. Um, but then the idea is that these cottage-style units that would be kind of clustered together in this pocket community are going to help fulfill a supportive housing need for the community, so I believe this would be, um, suiting the Oxford-based residents who are struggling to find temporary, stable housing in the community, so that is kind of the purpose and intent behind the project, I'm sure the future applicant can speak to all that better than I could. Uh, but just to get you acquainted with the site vicinity and the details, so this is a look at the site location. Uh, again, it's a two-acre site, it's off of Hester Road, it's on the east side of Hester Road, I'm gonna grab the laser pointer. To the north are the Habitat for Humanity subdivisions that were developed, um, those are referred to as the Recford Woods subdivisions, so there's, um, Fuller Way, that's immediately to the north, there's the Oxford Green Landaminium Complex that's kind of to the north and to the west. Uh, immediately to the south is what used to be called the Baymont Inn, it's now been, uh, branded as the College Inn and Suites. There's also the Somerville Bank that is further to the south, as well as the Westgate Mall property, and then to the east is the Northridge Single Family Subdivision. You can also see Westgate Drive off here to the east as well. And then this is a look at the zoning classifications in the area, so there's really three classifications that are present within the immediate vicinity. So again, the subject site is R1B, single-family, medium-density residential, you have R1A, which is single-family as well, lower-density of residential, and then all the red areas are zone GB or general business, and that's a commercial zoning classification. Looking to our new comprehensive plan, I love showing these slides now, um, this is from, this is obviously the one that was adopted in January of this year, and this property is designated suburban neighborhood. And, uh, I would say the, the development that's being proposed for this, for this site is probably not what is typical or what is imagined for a suburban neighborhood designation, but nevertheless, I think this project was conceived at a time that predated kind of the comprehensive plan visioning, um, and these are very broad brushstrokes when it comes to the comprehensive plan designation, so it's really trying to make a, a, a good, educated guess of what the, the right mix or the, the character of uses could be on a particular site, um, so kind of take that for what it is, I suppose. Looking to the south and to the west, you've got the Appointment Corridor classification, which is really kind of backing up more of the auto-oriented, commercial nature of the College Corner Pike corridor, but hopefully in the future, those sites would redevelop themselves into something that's a little bit more walkable and maybe a little bit more urban in flavor. Um, and then you've got the transitional suburban neighborhood classifications, which are those that don't really fit well within sort of the single-family suburban neighborhood kind of jurisdiction or designation, I should say. Those are kind of reserved more for like apartment complexes and, uh, more niche-style developments, um, so, you know, certainly a landaminium complex would kind of fit the bill for that, so that's really what that designation is there to, to achieve, is to kind of, um, identify those particular areas within the community that have kind of a unique sort of style or character to them. Looking at the existing land uses in the area, so anything that's in a light yellow is single-family primarily, or just vacant or undeveloped residential land. You'll see the blue color with a G, so that's just noting where there's government land, so these are two properties within the vicinity, vicinity of the site. The subject site, of course, is owned by the city, there's also this, uh, corner, uh, a corner of Hester Road and College Corner Pike, I believe it was a former Dairy Queen business, uh, that is now owned by the City of Oxford as well. And then anything that is pink is commercial land, anything that's in orange is multifamily residential. Um, so over here on the kind of southwestern corner of the map, that's the Miami Mobile Home Park, so, um, that is zoned GB, general business, but is in single-family usage essentially since each mobile home is essentially its own unit, that's the reason for that classification over there. Okay, so now we're gonna dive in a little bit closer, this is a bird's-eye view looking north, so you can see that the site is heavily wooded at present, a lot of the thickest woods are kind of toward the back, um, would be the, the eastern side of the property, um, so this wooded area is kind of spilling over into the surrounding, single-family residential properties along Fuller Way and Defore Lane, and, uh, also Westgate to some extent. And then this is rotating around, so now up is east, so this really gives you a sense for where that thickest pocket of woods is located, right in this area here. Then of course here is the College Inn and Suites and Somerville Bank, those are the nearest commercial properties. And then this is the Westgate Mall, way over here is a lot of green space on that parcel in between the woods and the building. And then here is a site photo that's looking from Hester Road, so you can see there's a curb cut here and what looks to have been a driveway, and if you think it looks like a driveway, that's because it used to be a driveway, that served a single-family home on this site. And looking to the twenty-twelve aerial, this actually shows you where that house used to be situated. Um, it was fairly close to the road, there was also a detached garage back here, so previously a house and detached garage, and then moving to twenty-twenty-two, those of course no longer exist on the property. Um, what I was able to do is take the current plan that we have from the, uh, from Ms. Muller's engineering team, and I geo-referenced it into the map, and this red line is essentially what I understand to be the property line for the property. Um, these white lines that are depicted here, these come from the county auditor's office, they are not survey accurate, they're just a rough approximation, so you should take this red line as the closest, now closest approximation we can achieve for determining where the property line is on top of the aerial imagery. So I'm gonna take the property lines off the map, just so it's a little less busy as we dive into the site details. So now I'm gonna walk you through the various concept plans that staff has received over the last several months. Um, I always think it's neat to kind of show our boards the evolution of a particular design as it comes to fruition, so I'll just present to you, so this is the very first concept we received this year, um, this was in January, so this is January ninth. So, uh, the vision all along has been to have twelve individual cottage units clustered on the site, and, um, I don't believe that, like architecturally speaking, these cottage units have changed that much since kind of the inception of, of, of building the proposal for the site. I think at most, originally, these were intended to be kind of one-bedroom units, um, again, these are three hundred and ninety-six square feet, uh, in terms of footprint. Presently, the, the idea is to have these as kind of efficiency-style units, so they're not going to be one-bedroom units, but rather will be, uh, like one open area that is serving the purpose of being the sleeping space, the dining space, and the kitchen space, so the kitchen counter and appliances and everything, the sink would be on the right-hand side of the image here on this floor plan, and then of course there would be a couple closets as well as a bathroom. And, uh, I think another unique thing to mention about these units is that they're going to be prefabricated. Um, I believe the intent is to use a company called Unabilt, which is based in Vandelia, so they build these units in a factory and then you essentially have them transported to the site itself, so they're not gonna be built or assembled on-site. So, returning now to, so this was again the first concept that was shared in January, and of course there's a lot of back and forth between, you know, future applicants and staff in terms of examining the details, offering guidance on standards and upcoming procedures and so forth. So went from that to, this was the second concept, so, um, not too much of a difference, um, still kind of having this straightaway private drive, um, taking the parking, which was originally kind of like a, a single bay or block of parking, and dispersing it so that there's two parking spaces per unit, it's kind of a separate designated parking area for each unit, um, and then having some parking and, and additional housing units toward the end. Um, and then actually, the desire at first was to have the dumpster enclosure tucked up in this corner here, um, which staff then informed the team that we don't allow dumpster enclosures in the front yard, so, uh, again, there's a lot of conversation going on during this, this kind of phase when, um, the plan is, is more flexible, more malleable in nature. So in looking at this as staff, what we really wanted to see happen from a design, um, kind of philosophy or, or thematic perspective was, uh, to really embrace the concept of the pocket neighborhood. I think this concept really suits this particular housing type very well, um, especially given the size of the units being as small as they are, um, and developing kind of a sense of community around it, around the development. Um, so this is actually a pocket neighborhood that, um, is made up of low-to-moderate income housing. This is in Yellow Springs, this is called the Glen Cottage's neighborhood, and it too also consists of twelve units, believe it or not. Um, it's a mix of rentals and for-sale homes, and it was completed in twenty twenty-one, so it is fairly new, and this is one that I just happened to be aware And this is one that I just happen to be aware of, so in kind of, again, kind of brainstorming between staff and, and the applicant, trying to figure out what's the most ideal design vision for this site. Well, let me just dive into some of the details with Glen Cottage's for a moment. So these are actually street view images that are fairly recent. I think this is kind of, in a sense, sort of the resulting character that could, could occur on this particular site. It is a very similarly sized site. There are two curb cuts, and I believe this is a one-way curb cut off of the road that it's on. There is a sidewalk that runs in front, and then the units are kind of clustered together. And there's a common green space in the middle. All the doors are fronting or oriented toward the common space in the middle with a sort of a sidewalk running through. So it really helps to kind of build that sense of community, having such a sort of a tight-knit development style. So returning to that second concept, and then being the, I guess, the GIS whiz that I can sometimes be, I took that aerial image from Yellow Springs and slapped it up on the map as if it were existing in Oxford, but making sure everything was to scale, to see, okay, in terms of a dimensional standpoint, an area standpoint, could this even theoretically fit on the subject site? And inserting it onto the map, of course, you can see that i- it is possible to fit something relatively the same size on this existing site. And so with that, staff, being me, developed a couple alternative sketches that we then shared back to the applicant, just to kind of give them a sense of what we were hoping the design, what, what we were hoping, what direction we were hoping it would go in. The first alternative was effectively called Alternative A. So this would have been in February, and so this is trying to embrace some of the principles that were demonstrated by that Glen Cottage's community. So having sort of the central green space in the middle. I think the key difference here is having the units sort of outward-facing instead of inward-facing. So these are the little front porches that are on the sides of the houses, and those are, are facing outward toward the north and to the south, as opposed to facing inward on each other, which is characteristic of that Yellow Springs neighborhood that I showed you. But pretty much just like Glen Cottage's, I mean, there's a one-way circular sort of loop drive that goes around the edge. With this particular concept, it was showing some parallel parking along the side, right here and right here, as well as some angular parking in the back. So trying to, to match those characteristics of that Glen Cottage's example as best as possible. And then I think probably the, the best location for a dumpster enclosure serving the site is, is more than likely gonna be kind of on the southern side of the development, nearest to the hotel, so it's not impacting the, the nearby Single Family residential as much, and of course, offering the maneuverability and accessibility for the garbage trucks that will inevitably be moving through and picking up the garbage. There was also another alternate sketch, and this was more akin to sort of the, the previous concepts that we had been receiving, kind of having a, a straightaway private drive, kind of going right through the middle, bisecting the site, and having the units face onto that drive. And I think kind of the key difference here is the pedestrian circulation, accessibility, having a more deliberate pedestrian network. And then for sure, having the turnaround at the end. I've seen comments from our departments long enough that I know that that's gonna be important to them, to make sure that there's adequate turnaround space for emergency vehicles, garbage trucks, et cetera. So here is showing kind of a T-turnaround with a pad for the enclosure. So those were shared in February, and this was the concept that we got back in return, so more or less embracing Alternative A, instead taking the, the parking that was oriented to be parallel and moving it to be angular, and still kind of having the, the two spaces allocated to each unit. And I think what's driving that mainly is the zoning standard that typically dictates that you need to have a minimum of two spaces per dwelling unit, in particular for Single Family. Actually, for Multifamily, it's a little bit higher at 2.5. So there is a difference of, I think, six spaces, depending on how you interpret the code. And all of that is subject to whatever we feel is appropriate, especially if this is proceeding as a planned development. There is the ability to waive standards and be flexible, so something to keep in mind there. So staff did take this concept plan and performed a preliminary zoning review, which is a more formal review. It was included in your packet. It's essentially a letter that has the attached plan. That was done on May the 17th. And so the applicant, I keep saying applicant, that's essentially going to be the future applicant that will be arriving on the scene eventually. And this is where we've arrived now. This is our current concept, and we're really looking for as much guidance as we can possibly get from the planning commission at this point, to understand, is this on the right track? Do we like this? Do we perhaps like Alternative B better than A? Do we want something totally different? You know, those are the kinds of questions that we're searching for at the moment. Not too many differences, I don't think, between this one and this one. I think there's more just kind of an embellishment of detail on this one. One of the concerns, I will mention, that staff had was the proximity of the parking spaces to the property lines. And normally for a planned development, you need a 25-foot minimum perimeter setback around the edge of the site. I think if we were gonna waive that in any way, it would be probably on the southern end of the site, adjoining to the commercial. I think that's where you could probably relax that a bit. But when it comes to the adjacency to the residential, I think that's, that's something that we should ideally want to try to allocate and make sure is preserved. But I think there has been a reasonable attempt here to try to address the impacts. They are showing some arborvitae, vegetative screening plantings along the northern edge. I'm not sure that's gonna achieve the exact same effect that a setback would, but I will note it for what it is worth. And I think the additional details to share on this one would be kind of the common amenities that would be in that sort of central courtyard area. I think there's a fire pit planned and some community garden space, as well as a compost bin in the back, which is great to see as well. And this is probably the slide I should have been talking from at this moment. Yeah, so this just gives you a, a better zoomed-in view of the current concept. So again, having kind of angled parking spaces off the one-way drive that would be leading around this direction, as well as some extra spaces in the back. And the reason that this space here is a little bit bigger is because the zoning code requires a loading space that's 10 by 25 dimensions, so that's why that's a little bit bigger there. I have a feeling that when our engineering division, our fire chief get this, they're probably gonna wanna see a little bit more pavement in the back, just to better facilitate the movement of larger vehicles. So that will probably be a design change that ultimately would result if this were to get submitted for formal review. Of course, there is still the sidewalk along Hester Road that would, I guess, in theory be remaining and potentially improved if there were any, any issues along that, as well as the new sidewalks that would extend outward from it. Okay, so in conclusion, just sharing a few subjects that the commission could consider in terms of providing feedback back to Ms. Muller. The cottages themselves, is this a desirable orientation? Relationship to the open space, the parking, one another? In terms of the private drive, do we like the configuration? The fact that there are two curb cuts versus one? Direction of travel, are we okay with that one-way looping around the site? The parking, what's desirable in terms of the number of spaces, 24 or 30? I think especially given sort of the purpose behind this development as more of a transition housing project, you know, this is perhaps not gonna have as much permanency to the residence as a more conventional housing development would, so perhaps that's up for negotiation. Location of the parking, again, I think the parking along the northern side is, is probably the most problematic and maybe needs some additional thought. Maneuverability is, is, is another key subject, and eventually, we are going to need what's typically referred to as a, a fire truck training template. That's something our fire chief absolutely needs for his review, to make sure that his vehicles can safely navigate the area. Setbacks, I've mentioned that already. Are the setbacks in the screening sufficient in relation to adjoining properties? Division of open space, that was something I actually didn't mention. The fact is that planned developments require a minimum of 20% open space to be reserved. And that will effectively be met by reserving a pretty big chunk of the site to the back, keeping the woods in place, hopefully. So that's a good sort of reservation of natural, natural space. Of course, there's gonna be a lot of other open space as well that will be meaningful, especially here in the center courtyard. So just another subject for consideration, the open space. Some other topics that are somewhat of question marks for the time being, but we'll eventually get into the nitty-gritty as we get into the formal submittal. The future utility provisions, stormwater systems, signage, lighting. We do have an example sign image, and the plan itself is showing a community sign, which I think is located in the right-of-way, but that's okay. We'll, we'll make sure it gets moved out of that area and into a more suitable location. But yeah, a lot of these details will eventually be following in the formal submittal. I believe we're targeting a submittal in time to arrive for planning commission in August. And of course, that will go through the usual process, going out for department review, notifying all the surrounding neighbors of the hearing, giving them opportunity, ample opportunity to comment and influence the proposal. So all that is yet to come, but we figured the best first step now was to get it in front of you guys and see what comments you'd have to share in terms of directing what you'd like to see. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Can you go ahead and put that final map up, please? Thanks.
Can I ask a question about, is the number of parking spaces something subject to the, you know, the weighting, the dimensional requirements, or other conditions? So when I look at the flexibility in the code, is that one of the topics that is subject to our discretion?
I believe that it is. Yes. But I would recommend not going any lower than 24 at this time, unless there's additional evidence that would argue for less than that. So two, two per dwelling unit, more or less. I think this shows 30 at present, so that may be open for debate, but I think that's still respecting the code because that is allocating enough parking per our Single Family standard. If we're operating off our Multifamily standard, which is technically sort of the, the, the regular requirement that would typically apply, because we would consider this multifamily just because there's more than one dwelling unit on a single, single site. Yeah, I think that would probably be sort of the, the, the range that we would recommend be open for debate, sort of between the 24 and the 30 on the amount of parking.
I have a weird comment. What if? So make it 24 spaces. You don't need to have two spaces right in front of every house. Like, there's so much room there in the back. So instead, you could have the parallel parking, basically, and create a lot more green space in between, and then have a bunch of parking in the back.
Yes, that's a great idea.
I guess that wasn't so weird.
That's a great thought.
I, I would actually lean the other way, because the most valuable natural space to me is that forest in the back, and also this is less prone to... Is that good? No, are you gonna say something?
I'm not certain with this particular development if, like, a huge amount of woods in the back is a great idea.
Okay. I, I, I just favor the environmental benefits, but I, I can see that. Yeah, and at least here, the parking spaces that are there aren't taking away from that. And then also, in terms of, like, we talk a lot about when driveways are too close, and that can cause issues. Well, here, everybody sort of has their own separate space that's pretty nicely delineated, so I think that helps a little.
So I, I had a question. These, you had talked about the Yellow Springs. Some of them are owned, some are rented. This would be a planned unit development and owned by an individual entity that would provide temporary transitional housing. So, and this may be getting in the weeds too quick, but just kind of going where Mr. Brackett was. Are these two spots for that unit? Like, is it Unit A, 1 and 2, or is it? I, I understand the planned unit is a number based on dwelling units, but these are also smaller dwelling units, so you have a square footage issue for occupancy and things of that nature, which also reduces the amount of people that can feasibly live on the property. So would Cottage A have two spots, or is it just, hey, we have one unit, two, and it just happens to look like they're personalized?
Yeah, in terms of divvying up, you know, assigned parking spaces, that's really gonna be up to the owner and operator to determine. I think having the, the two spaces naturally aligned with each unit, you know, psychologically, somebody is probably going to assume that, oh, those are my two parking spaces because they're adjacent to my unit. But that's really, ultimately, it's gonna be left up to the owner-operator to determine, and the code doesn't get so specific as to say, you know, how you're supposed to sort of divide up the, the assignment of parking spaces. It determines the, the number, the minimum number required based on the number of units, but it isn't like an exact calculation, because not all units are gonna be the same size, especially in like more of a multifamily development where you've got differing numbers of bedrooms, different occupancies. So it's really just more of a, a rough science when it comes to that.
The reason I brought that up is, I think, for me to waive it, even though it is at their discretion, if I'm personally gonna vote to waive something, I need to know how it is, because congregate parking, where, congregate parking will be utilized more per capita than that's mine, A and B, you better not park there. So, and, and funny enough, not, not the dwelling units. I lived in an apartment complex years ago that had a very similar design, and, you know, I know that we had a lot of bays open because people thought those were their spots. So one of the things I was thinking to preserve green space, too, is actually taking, instead of having six times two, having three times six and clump them together, because that also allows for a different green screen or, or other amenities that can go up. So if we are gonna get into the waiving of numbers and conditions, I do wanna go in the weeds.
Yeah, I think that seems reasonable to figure out now, and also, the opposite happens if you don't, because then people will think it's designated, like you say, and it's not.
Because we could get away with less if it was assumed that it's a...
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kinda going there.
Are, are we gonna hear from somebody else about the design of this? Or are we, where, are, are you pretty much representing everything?
Well, that's where I, I was gonna ask here as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So we're in public session, but technically, this is a city-owned property, the proposal, so I'll, I'll trust you to help us navigate this discussion. Like, if...
I think you can have, you can ask for Ms. Muller to come up.
Sure. You can stay up there if you want to. We're doing things a little loosey-goosey because it's not a formal proposal, and we're not voting, so we're just trying to have more of a discussion, so.
Absolutely.
But yeah, if you wanna kind of, I mean, you're welcome to revisit or talk about anything Zach said, answer any question.
You did a great job, Zach. I thought it was very detailed. Yeah, I think the parking is, it's probably my least favorite part of the design, because there's no great way to do it. And a lot of the, because these are gonna have, one, max, two people in the unit, it seems like a lot of parking for who will live here, but that's the code. And so I am open to whatever seems to make sense. I think there was some concern, a couple of the conversations internally for our team is not everyone can parallel park well. So having parallel parking was like, is this the best way to have parking here? And then the second was thinking about making a larger parking lot in the back, which in many ways I like. Is that practical for the person living up here if they've got armloads of groceries? So that was kind of some of the discussion. I don't think we're tied to this. I'm not tied to this. There are some things I don't love about the way it looks aesthetically. So very open to whatever makes sense, but those were kind of the internal conversations. I do think we wanna lean into as much green space as we can, and being, preserving as much of that forest as we can is a nice buffer. It's really pretty back there. And so, but if, if there's a way to even do parallel parking on the north side with a larger lot, a little expanded, getting rid of six of the spaces or more, keeping it at the 24... it at the 24, I'm totally okay with that. I don't think we need extra spaces, but I want to be, I mean, he's been great about helping navigate all the rules. There's just a lot of different moving parts to try and, and to make this work. So I want to be sensitive to that as well, but very open to, to shifting any of that that makes sense.
Is there any sense that there would be a reason that you, is it okay that we would not have the same exact configuration for all units? So for example, I could imagine for a transitional housing type, there might be many people who don't bring cars, right? So if we could reduce the total number of parking spots and have, you know, this configuration with two spots for some of the homes, I can see that being very valuable, especially you might have people in this type of housing who are overcoming disabilities or have disabilities where that kind of access is really important to a vehicle. But that at the same time, you might have some units where people don't have vehicles at all, and that's just kind of like a, like overkill, you know? So could the, could six of them, for example, have these two up parking spaces and six of them just be kind of, you know, like essentially walk-ins, walk-ups or something like that? Or something like parallel, like one or two parallel spots or even three? Okay, there's no, no need for them all to be the same or completely.
No, not from my perspective at all. As long as there's enough parking for anyone, everyone who needs it, from a practical perspective, that's all we need. So yeah, I think there's a lot of, I would definitely consider other options.
Can we push the road and talk to me about setbacks? I should know this, but could we push the road to the outside of the property and push the parking spaces towards the units? Because I'm coming at this, this, the same way Ms. Blackmore is, is that, you know, I'm going to want at least one of these units to be ADA accessible. Because I noticed that in the Yellow Springs drawing, there was a big fat handicap parking space right next to the unit that, that if we have one accessible unit, we're probably going to want that space close to the unit so the person in a wheelchair wouldn't have to wheel back across the driveway with their groceries to the unit.
It would also provide a buffer, so to speak. I mean, I know it's a permanent object, but it, it pushes the usability inward.
I mean, that way, I, I do really like the idea of the green in the center because I think that sense of community is going to be huge for a space like this. So I really like that design aspect. So, so shifting, just basically flipping the spaces and the, and the driveway.
Yeah, I'm actually a favorite, in favor of this design. I like the green space in the middle. I like that it doesn't require more parking in back that takes from the forest. I like that they're individualized spaces. And normally, I prefer sort of reduced parking, but in this situation, I don't think it's taking for much. And so as long as we have significant buffers and the neighbors are happy, I think this is great.
So are we entering the conversation about this now or should we see whether there's any other, I mean, how are we doing this? If there's any other option, we have to get in.
If we have any other questions for Ms. Miller, you can ask them and then we'll see if anybody from the public has, and then we'll close and chat.
I just want to bring up a concern I have about this. I, I have two concerns. One is, in looking at the prefabricated building elevations, it seems that on the backside, the side that will be facing the green space, there's really just one small window. And that does create a little bit of a defensible space concern for the shared space in the middle. So if there's just one small window and the pathways face the front, it makes it so that the backs of all these buildings are turned away from the shared community space. And I think that that sometimes would be a situation where it makes that safe feel, that space feel unsafe for people. So I wonder, I don't know if there's different products available, ones that have something more of an interface on that backside or a different window configuration or something so that people, that, that there is eyes on the street for that, for that central location. That would be one of my concerns. And then another concern that I have, i- is the ADA concern. I mean, it'd be great if one of these units, it looks like they're raised on a platform where it might be a little challenging to ramp them, but I can just imagine that people utilizing this housing type might really need accessibility. And then finally, I, I've walked this area a bit on, on hot days and I'm, I'm a little concerned. I know we have a problem in our existing affordable housing stock with heating and cooling. And so I just think that we've tried to put some thought into shade trees, how do we do some passive cooling to keep this from being a really overheated? And then, you know, I'm assuming that, I don't know if we'd be using like a split, I, I just think this thought should be given to how these spaces can be cooled in the summer, especially.
Let me speak to, try to get to all those. I think these are custom-built, so adding a window in the back is absolutely possible. There's no reason why we can't do that. I think that you bring up a really good point. I think lighting is going to be critical in that common space, so that's another one that we'll make sure, I know that's forthcoming when we do the formal application, there'll be a lighting plan, but I, I hear what you're saying about that. I'm meeting with Unibilt next week, so I can definitely talk to them about adding a larger window. I think that's, you bring up a great point there. These will be heated and cooled with P-Tech units. So we are very much aware of the need to properly heat and properly cool them. I haven't thought of the trees that we're having to plant. You have wonderful tree ordinances here, you know, that, that are required. And so they'll be, thank you. Lots of attention paid to making sure we have the proper number of trees, but we have not thought of it in terms of shade and, and that respect. So I want to think about that and see what, what happens with that. And certainly, as need presents for ramps and things, it's not in the original design. Could we have one that's ADA accessible all the time? I think we could. The problem becomes, we don't want to hold it until there's a need. And so will it be available when somebody presents becomes kind of a challenge from an operations perspective. But certainly, we would make them ADA accessible for anyone who would present that needs that. So if we don't have a unit available and we have someone needing to move in, there are modifications that we will certainly do in order to make that accessible for them.
How, how far off are the buildings from that right now? Like, does it have like the walkway and how far, how much of a ramp would need? Could the ramp with like a grade that's ADA accessible be put on there without, okay, needing like a double?
Yes.
I, I do think that that's probably going to come up, I'm going to guess, really, really fast out of the gate for this project.
Yeah, it could very well, yes.
Universal design for this would be fantastic since, especially because I could see this as something utilized by some of our charitable groups, helping those in need in this area. Having the ability to put somebody who has a disability in any of these houses would be huge.
And I was thinking if there were two ramps that were interchangeable for different properties, if the buildings are universal designed, then as the need is the ramp, and I know then you're talking storage or whatever, but you can move it from, you know, A to J very easily.
Sure.
Is there an onsite, a vision for onsite manager? What, what is the management structure for this? It sounds like a project that will need pretty close supervision.
I want to, I want to speak to a couple of things. Yes, there will be somebody, I don't know that they will live on site, but somebody assigned that would be managing that on a very close basis. This is not an emergency shelter and it's not really what we think of as transitional housing. These are affordable units. So there would be an option for people to have a 30-day lease, but they would also have the option of a longer-term lease. So this is not your traditional, they're going to stay here for a minute and then leave. That may be the case, where some people just need that until I can get something more permanent. But this is not just for people that are straight off the streets and are just staying here for a minute. We want to build much more of a community sense than, than that would suggest. I just want to make sure that's clear. That could be an option, but that's not what we're picturing all 12 of these units to be. But close management and operations is critical. We did, if, I, I shared in some of our, what I, what I sent over at the concept design, the feel of this is really important, a sense of safety. I hear you on that. That's, that's critical. That's definitely an improvement we can make because people need to feel safe, they need to feel like they belong, they need to feel that sense of inclusion. So many people's housing stability is because they don't have that. And this is a place that we want people to become stably housed, whether they stay here forever or if they gain that and then are able to move into their next. That is, that's critically important. So having a resident-managed model where they have a voice, they have a say, they have ownership and feel that sense of commitment and belonging while they're there is important. At the same time, we have to manage it well. And so balancing those two things is, is very important to this project. Something else that I just want to, want to say is that the idea here is that we're creating a new model, a new tool that communities can have in their tool belt when they think about affordable housing. This has not been done before in the way that we're doing it. It's unique and it's a different way of thinking about housing. And it's been challenging because there are, because it's not traditional. Even talking to the bank about this, we, it took us three banks to get the bank on board because they don't know what this is. They don't know when you don't own the land, how does that happen? There's just been a lot of new for people. And so what my hope is, is that this becomes a model that people will look at, just like you did with the Yellow Springs model and say, wow, this has really got some cool elements. People will be coming to look at it and say, I could do this in our community. We've got two acres of land that could be redeveloped. That's the goal. I want to solve it here and I want this to be really valuable to Oxford. But the whole plan for us at CDP is to do a new tool that communities could gravitate toward and, and help to solve this crisis that is everywhere. So that's, that's really important that we get this right and that we do it well. That's really important to this project, so.
So can I ask a follow-along question about that? Is that you alluded to this a little bit before, which is based on the model of what you're trying to do, the community building, providing affordable housing. You want this to look like a model, but it's also existing within our code, which is making you do things.
That's right.
So taking away, at what point, for example, is our code impinging on what you think would be the ideal model? Because I would rather have the ideal model, even if it required some variation from our code, than something that's a kind of awkward compromise between what you're hoping is going to work as a community and strict compliance with our code. So what ways do you feel like this approximates your ideal and which ways, if, if the code were less of an object, you could achieve the ideal model?
That's a great question. I don't think it's impinging much. And in fact, the design, when you went through, that was very powerful for me to see the evolution. Because even the designs that our engineering firm kind of put together, we're missing that community feel. And what you came up with was so much more. Yes, this is more the feel. Honestly, the parking piece is the only thing I'm like, because I just don't think we need that much parking. But I also am aware that whatever you do for here, you know, starts to set in precedent. So, but there's really not much because we're trying to be environmentally conscious. Not, not all communities care about the trees, you know, just mow them down. They don't have those kinds of protections. They're not thinking about the environment, not thinking about that set of trees in the back. They're thinking about how can we build more back there? And so I think in many way, in many ways, Oxford has created an opportunity to really be intentional about some of the thinking. And it's very much in line with some of your community values, much more so than you're going to find in a lot of communities. So I think it's a great place to start to really kind of make this flagship model that even if they don't require it, we're going to be committed to it and we know how to do that, based on, on some of the heart that Oxford has. It's really unintentionally been the best place to, to do this project.
Well, you've hung with us for a little while. We've talked about this for a little while now. Someone expressed gratitude, we have the possession, but yeah.
A little few years.
Yeah, thank you, a few years you've been at this and thank you for your persistence.
Wow, for sure. One of the things I'll tell you, when I first, the first time I went and, and sat in council and were talking about affordable housing, council said, "Housing for everyone." That like, because I can tell you, we have conversations in lots of pockets of communities where that's part of the challenge, is convincing them to care about housing for everyone. So the fact that you do is, is huge and that's why we're here. Because we talked to a lot of different communities, we're in Butler County, so we want to do this first project here, it made sense logistically. It was, it's like a whole different world. I know you know that in Oxford, but it was so refreshing to hear that there's a commitment to really providing housing for people. So to answer your question, I think parking's the only little hitch and it's not that big a hitch. But thank you for asking it. It's a good question.
What, what do you think the parking would ideally look like? So, I mean, one thing I can see in this type of cottage apartment design that's valuable, that's different than an apartment building, is that for people who have mobility limitations, it gets you closer to your space. And also, if you're someone who needs to like fix your, or repair your vehicle personally, it gets you, again, you're closer to where you might keep your tools. There's a certain kind of thing that this affords you that an apartment building wouldn't. And so I can see that there's an advantage to having some parking, even for, even, you know, given the expected demographics of this, of this setup. So what do you think would be an ideal setup for the parking? How many per unit? What kind of alignment?
I like, one of the things I like about this is the design currently, is that it does give that sense of, this is my space. So I, I like the feel of that, like I, I have my own spaces. People have not had their own parking spaces. So I kind of like the sense of that. But I don't think we need two spots per unit because we're going to have one, maybe two people in these units. So it isn't, I think it's a little bit more than what we need, but given they'll have a guest over, you, you know, you need a place for them to park. So I think, I like, I like the, the close of that. I wonder if we could do parallel on the north end and have the individual spaces on the south end, if that wouldn't be kind of a hybrid between the two.
Yeah, that's what I was going to mention earlier.
And then maybe add some spaces, maybe, you know, two or three spaces or whatever in the back to accommodate, I don't know, something, something like that, I think.
One thing Mr. Smith said that I actually, can you go back to the final, the, with the green? On that, if we were to move the road to the outside, and I know this is, we, you talked about Yellow Springs, a sense of community, going back to the original design of the road in the middle, if you turn them inward, because there's no way to access that common space, you have to walk around your house. So if you turn it so that they're all facing it to a pedestrian main street, common space, you could put the spots behind them and move the road out. And then it is, we're accomplishing our accessibility because it's now on the correct side of the road for individuals with disabilities. You can put them behind the house where there's one window. There, there's a few design changes and then you're, you're having the community because from what I, even with a larger window, I see it as, if I want to go to your place, I have to walk out, go all the way, I mean, I'm, I'm doing a big bow. So I think we really want to focus on community and, and also, I mean, then to your point, not having to cross the street to, you know, go over and do something to your car. It, it's nearby where I grew up, there were houses that didn't have driveways. You went through the alley and your garage was in the back. So that's kind of, and we've done that, actually, was it South Farm? Some of those, there's, it's no vehicular access at the front. You go to the back for it. So just throwing that out as an idea. Because then we could, I think that would kill a couple of birds, go with less parking, accessibility is there. So just food for them.
So are we?
So he looked like he wanted to say something.
Yeah, it's just like we're throwing out a lot of options. We're all talking about how long this has taken us to get this far and I think this looks pretty good. So if you like some of these, for me personally, if you like some of these ideas, want to incorporate, that seems fine, but to me, this seems great and I would love to see you forward.
I guess I'm just procedurally, do we, are there any public comments? And we closed public hearings, so we can just talk. I'm still in the questioning phase, but.
I know how it goes.
No, I know, I just didn't know what, because we want to go, we wanted to be talking about it. So I just didn't know what, you know, I'm ready to sink my teeth into the conversation too, I guess.
All right, so are there any more questions for Ms. Moore? All right, thank you very much. All right. All right, at this time, we'll entertain any comments, uh, from the public on this matter. Seeing none, I will accept a motion to close public, uh, here. Got a motion from Dr. Perthrich.
Second.
Mr. Smith with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Seeing none, we are closed. Discuss away.
Can I just jump in, just with some dimensional things? Which is, this is, you know, I really want this to be a model of how you could do this, and it would be functional and beautiful, and we're really proud of it, and not because it was a really good compromise between our code, as it's written, and we're trying to adhere to the code. I, I want to respect precedent, but I also know that we're likely going to revise our zoning code, and one of the first things I wanna do is look at our parking minimums. I mean, I'm trying to not use swear words, we're, if, look at it, you know, we're basically dedicating the equivalent square footage of the unit to the two parking things that we won't likely need anyway. It, it uses up the land, it adds to the cost, uh, it, it's just one of those ways in which our code is producing an outcome that, if it looks awkward, it is, because our code's making the applicant try to squeeze all of this in, you know? I mean, how much is one of those parking spaces, eight by eighteen or something? It's basically three hundred square feet of asphalt. Many of these units that will, will sit vacant, because one person will be likely living in a three hundred square foot unit, some of those may not have a car. And it's parked on a public street that's wide enough to accommodate on-street parking. You know, it does them currently, but Hester Road does not prohibit parking, as far as I can tell. My point being is that I hope we can be flexible on the number of parking, so that that enables us to be more creative with the distribution of the parking spaces to achieve the goals. And so, you know, my, so that, I would just start with that premise, that I hope we're flexible. I don't wanna try to engineer it on the fly, I appreciate there's been extensive conversations, but I would just express my, in, in, my impression, when I look at this as a planner, it doesn't look like, it looks like a, a model in some ways, but in other ways not. You know, the parking looks kind of like an awkward answer. I think this one's gonna be hell to mow.
What sort of campground?
Yeah, it's gonna be really hard to mow, it's gonna be really hard to plow. Um, and, and so to me, that, I, I think there are more creative ways to do it if you could reduce the number of spaces. I, I would love to see more parallel, if not all parallel in the front, and then have some pool of surplus parking in the back. A little bit, I thought option A looked quite functional to me, um, in terms of the, the number and distribution, and if there's ever super spillover, it's legal to park your car on Hester Road. You know, like, I, I think that someone's having a party. So, um, anyway, I just, uh, I think it's, I'm with Jason, I don't wanna nitpick this, and I can't design it on the fly, but I'm just saying, my personal expression is that if we can waive some of the dimensional requirements, including the number of parking spaces, I mean, I don't know what a number would this be, but like one point five per unit seems like, how many cars are there literally gonna be here? Um, and if we really care about affordable housing, maybe we ask them to put the money into making the green space nice and not extra asphalt. You know, because if, if you can have fewer parking spaces, you could push, and they were parallel, you could push the roadway out, as per the chair's comments, and there are more open, functional space in the middle, and not all this weird, you know, and, and, but then if we can think about the, I mean, I respect the idea of the ownership, the ADA, but I would, I would love to see it as a variation on this, rather than, um... Yeah, so that's my impression of the concept. I'm super glad we're in this place, I think this is gonna be really awesome. I want it to be beautiful, like, I want it to be, I want it to be functional for you, and, and I can't engineer that. You have the vision of what a community of people are gonna be living in this, like the, the community, this is quite a different model for us, I mean, we all have single-family houses, you know? So what makes that functional, to me, is a kind of design principle I will defer to the experts on. Like, what makes a good common space, and how does the front door, back door interact with it? But I just don't want the parking to drive the design, that's what I'm saying.
And I one hundred percent agree on that. I, I do, when I think about this affordable housing model, we have a lot of things that look like this in my hometown of San Diego, garden cottages, they typically call them, they're usually not parked at all. And, um, and they're sought, they're sought after, because they're in the nineteen twenties streetcar suburbs, and people really covet these types of locations and pay a pretty penny for them. Um, and so, you know, I think this is a model that can really work. Um, when I think about what does it do for us here in Oxford, I do think we have a constituency of people who are lower income, who may, in some cases, have lived in their cars for some length of time, where their cars are their connection, that it's as much of a solid connection as they've ever had. And so something that this type of model affords us when it comes to lower income housing, is something where you can have that access to this vehicle, you know, where you might be, and I guess what I'd like to see more of here is a tool, you know, like a tool shed, that you, the kinds of things that make spaces, you know, functional for people who are trying to repair things. Because apartments make that really hard. If you live in an apartment, it's hard to get that kind of thing done. Some kind of like, you know, like a laundry room slash tool, I don't know what, so, so places where you can functionally do things. Because that, to me, is the point of why you wouldn't do an attached building, you're, you're doing something different here, because it allows people to drive up and to like fix stuff, and to kind of live in the messy way we know is the reality of, of like trying to keep your life together. So it's an interesting one for me, like, you know, I like the showcase idea, but I think the reality is, it, you know, this is very similar to a mobile home park in terms of how it'd be functionally used, in my, in my estimation.
Yeah, I, I'm sympathetic, I just think in this case, what you'd be replacing with that option to have two spaces is, is mostly turf grass. And so I don't think there's a lot of value in that, and if you have families that both need to drive, because these are college kids, right? The Miami students mostly don't need lots of additional parking. They walk to Uptown, they work Uptown, they go to classes. Here, you might have two functioning adults that need cars to get where they're going.
I would like to say that my family, my family went with one vehicle for fifteen years. So, like, and I know actually, your family.
We're down to one now, one's in the car shop.
So, so the thing is, that even though there's a great idea to have ownership, like for one space, like to say, oh, we need ownership, like with two spaces, that gets...
I'm, I'm not sure that's compared, I think everybody's different, because I grew up in many mobile homes, actually, throughout my childhood, and both parents needed vehicles to get to their jobs.
But in Oxford, though?
No, but there's...
This is a walkable location, this is, so this is a good thing about this location, it's walkable, so that's good. Right, right, right.
To me, this is so walkable.
Hold on a sec, all right. Rain it in. To reach our city and get access to all sorts of things, our city is actually walkable, and we've worked hard to do that, and I appreciate that. If you have to work a job that you're a contractor, or a maid, you need to be able to drive out to individual houses. I know it'd be great if public transportation always provided that, but I know it doesn't. Um, and the, the range in which you might have to go is pretty far. Now, maybe there would be enough additional spaces in the back that you wouldn't need to for each one, that is totally impossible. But also, in this case, I think that might end up taking away from the forest, which if we're talking about green space and environmental, that is more important to me than the single piece of concrete that's replacing turf grass that has almost no environmental benefit.
Can you go back to option, your option A, which I think is...
So also, though, I will say, I'd take any of these.
So one thing I also wanna add is, I, I was on the board of the Family Resource Center for six years, I worked with Ms. Mueller on the Homeless Coalition for probably as many years, so a lot of my comments, actually, and, and no disrespect to trees, function over fashion. So there, there is a clientele, there's a, there's a purpose here, there are certain things, and that's why I was saying, if we're going to do it differently, um, and there's a target population, or we know a target demographic, and, you know, I mean, we have the data that the people that, uh, Family Resource Center, TOPPS, all of them serve, have X cars, and, and so that's where I want us to think differently, because if we are going to do it, we have to, to Dr. Perthrich's point, we're, we're right now going, well, it's two point five times this and that. I, I, we maybe have to rethink this as to really, what is the outcome, what is the purpose? That's why I appreciate you talking about the longevity. Um, there might be some people, and, and I actually think of a, a friend of mine who would have loved one of these places, because it's zero, a lot less maintenance. So that's where I think, I don't, I don't wanna get into the weeds or, or nitpick, but I think this is our opportunity to really help this development be, it's not gonna be perfect, there's gonna be other iterations, but I think we could say, and we've talked about it uptown, we don't care about parking, we don't care about onsite parking, so I think this is our opportunity to support some creativity and let staff have some additional latitude.
So, I mean, not to, I look at this, and if we want, I mean, I'm also compromise-oriented, like, one could do pull-in parking on one side, and it would require a, a modification, probably five or eight feet on one side of this thing. Uh, yeah, I mean, I just, yeah, I mean, I think there's a way to meet all the different needs in here, and that we have parking out in front in parallel, or maybe some pull-in. We've got enough parking for every, for each unit to have a car in front, but then there's spillover in the back. Uh, there's Hester Road for the time these guys have a block party and guests come over.
The time you said that.
And, you know, and this I like, because it pulls the back parking in, and so it's not just wasted open space. You know, this option seems to preserve the most of the forest possible. So, yeah, I just feel like, and, and this was, how many parking spaces do you model this for, Zach? Did you have an exact number?
The green one was thirty-one.
I don't recall that number. Think it was designed to be twenty-four. Yeah, that, to me, thirty-one is just like such a large number of parking spaces that most, and, and let's again, be, this is affordable housing, that every dollar we're not putting into a house is going into asphalt. And, 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 and every, every, that asphalt will require repaving periodically. So all I'm saying is, let's right-size the asphalt, and that's where I defer to the applicant on what they think this, this would have, and the applicant hasn't given us a number, but has said that maybe thirty's too many, and maybe twenty-four's too many.
Well, and Ms. Blackmore had a really good point about the passive cooling, knowing, and, and I know this is Mr. Bracken's, uh, passion and expertise, and this would definitely require a grant. A good part of this space is south, wide open, uh, solar panels.
And there is, there is money for that, in the Inflation Reduction Act, community-wide solar, and low-income projects are specifically called out as a destination for those funds. So there, there's opportunity there.
Mr. Moore, do you feel comfortable with our, uh, our latitude? Is the ambiguity comforting?
Yes, I, I think you've offered a lot of really good thoughts in, in response to pretty much every proposal I've, I've presented here, including the latest concept. I would really appreciate getting some feedback on the perimeter setback aspect, which seems to be written almost in stone into our code, that you must adhere to a twenty-five-foot perimeter setback for any residential plan development. Um, so with alternative A here, it actually shows compliance with that, but only on the north side, so that is basically twenty-five feet, as shown here. It would not show compliance down toward the south in order to achieve a layout.
And point of clarification, it's from any structure, uh...
Parking or structure must adhere to that setback, that's the way the code is written for plan development.
Does a road count the same as parking?
It would.
Okay.
Our code permits us to la, I mean, it's explicit, it's more explicit about dimensional requirements than it is about the park. And so to me, if, if achieving a better design requires some infringement on the twenty-five-foot setback, I would say, if you note that it's not, it's not equal, we have residential to the north and a commercial used to the south, uh, if one wanted to infringe upon that side, for example, to get some pull-in parking on one side, if we felt like that was so important...
There's a lesser of the two evils.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I respect the cogent in suites, it could also be a function of, do you have some mature trees? I mean, again, planting arbor vida to, to cover up the, I would rather just design it properly, so we don't have a headlight glare, so you don't have to plant arbor vida that could die. Uh, but we already have a commercial facility over at kind of a hotel, so, um, yeah, that's just my impression. It's a dimensional requirement, a few feet, it's not written in stone, it's explicit in our code that we can modify it, right?
Yes, you can, you can modify it, for sure, yeah. I, I would say, I mean, my opinion on the matter is, um, I would be more inclined to accept a waiver to that requirement along the southern lot line versus the northern. I think the northern really needs to be respected the most, just because of the adjacency to the residential, and then, you know, the, the path of those headlights, I'm concerned, that if you don't have the adequate screening there, or if the screening sort of dies off over time, or, or gets taken out, that that could, um, impact the adjoining residential in a, in a harmful way.
But if, for example, you had to pull in, like, let's say you pull in on the south side and you can park facing into the units, right? I mean, that's one potential option. It's a, it's a modification of X number of feet, I mean, a parallel parking space is seven or eight feet, right? In terms of width, and then...
Yeah, it's a little bit less in width.
And then it's something like eighteen feet deep, I mean, I don't know what are pull-in spots.
Little bit more, it's, I think it's twenty-two feet long.
Twenty-two? Well, I guess with...
And if you, if you were to pull in face south, that's no different, uh, or, it's no different of a, a feel or an impact than the spots that are already on the, the hotel. I mean, people are pulling in, so it's, it's not, I agree with you, same as a residential where we're glaring in their dining room, I mean, somebody who's staying at the hotel's gonna have the same impact as somebody, uh, southbound slant parking, so. All right, is that dangerous enough for you, Mr. Moore?
I think so.
We've given you every possible option. All right, appreciate that robust conversation, but I think, I think this is definitely our opportunity to be different, and, um, yeah, I know we wanna revise the code, and parking's one of, one of our biggest.
And even if like, if we, if we had no dimensional, if we had no minimum parking requirements... An applicant would still wanna provide parking on, you know, it's just the code's not dictating what the number is. So, you know, maybe in some future world, we won't have parking minimums, but that doesn't mean developers won't put parking minimums, just based on what they perceive the need to be. And that's, I guess, what I would love for us to move towards here.
All right, well, uh, so there's no vote, that would have been the next thing on my to-do list. So we'll just move on to room and number seven, old business, provisions to planning commission rules of procedure, this was tabled at the March meeting. I'll let Mr. Perry speak to it, uh, but basically, it was really just some clerical clarifications and additional reading time for, uh, folks, so. Mr. Perry?
Thank you. The only thing we changed since the last time we talked about this, I think it was three months ago, was correcting the, uh, references to the charter, um, that had not been changed since the last charter amendment, and I think two thousand fifteen, uh, or sixteen, so everything else, well, actually, there is a change to the wording for a work session, and I think you would be questioned, uh, Mr. Chair, about giving this flexibility for discussion. Uh, so it wasn't, it wouldn't totally cut off public comment, but it would steer it toward not intentional, unless there's really something silly at least you brought up, and, and that could be chair discretion, but really, the rest of it is just clerical corrections. So if there's no comments, we can, um, you can vote on it tonight with, uh, just a voice vote, if you can make it, make it so.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I guess I would just have a question, we, excising a portion that I didn't even know existed, which is the idea of minority reports. So, you know, there's like a dissenting opinion, uh, now that I know it exists, I don't know whether one would ever use it, uh, it's never in my, all my time here, ever been used.
We typically, uh, put comments that are in the minority in the staff report, rather than relying on a commission member to draft them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's already being done.
Yeah.
So it's taking it out, doesn't mean it goes away.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I...
Full disclosure, I didn't know there were interior revises either. All right. All right, so, um, if there's no, um, additions, corrections, changes, concerns, I would happily entertain a motion.
I believe approval of the amendment, as, as stipulated in the staff memorandum.
Second.
All right, Dr. Perthrich with the motion, Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in, uh, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
I'll put in my minority report.
Well, and, and I thought it was funny, by the way, the motion passes. I, I thought it was funny, I was thinking of the movie Minority Report. Uh, before we adjourn, there's one thing that I neglected to mention in the, uh, I guess it wouldn't have fit anywhere. Uh, after our last meeting, I synthesized some of the comments and, um, perspective of our board collectively. perspective of our board collectively and I, with Ms. Mueller's help, wrote a letter on our behalf to Mr. Fair at the Butler County Board of Zoning Appeals, just synthesizing the, like overall tones referring to how we have discrepancies between utility hookups if you are in the city and out. So Mr. Perry delivered that on my behalf. And they actually tabled it. So we rushed to write it and they tabled it. So I just wanted to let you know I had forgotten to mention that to folks. If you'd like a copy, happy to send it to you.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
That's great.
It was in the council packet from last week.
Oh, that's right.
Obviously, I knew I'd seen, but it's great. So thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no other business, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dr. Prithrich with his, I think, five of six motions and Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor of adjourning? Any opposition? Seeing none, we are adjourned, folks.